Did quorum issues. This meeting is being called to order at 7:00 instead of 6:30 as originally posted. And the executive session will be held at the end of the meeting approximately 8:30. And thank you Julie La Lumiere for reposting this morning. It was a very last minute thing, so thank you Julie. All right. Okay, so I wanted to take a minute. Yeah?
Do you want members of the public, you need to announce that it's being recorded?
Yeah, I'm a stand-in for Kira. It's been a while since I've done this. Thank you Beth. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting online may use Acton TV's YouTube channel. Found at the top of the agenda, this meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on Acton TV's website at actontv.org. And as we're getting started, can I kind of get a show of hands for those of you that are here for the pool renaming? Okay, so if it is fine with everyone here, I would like to move that up to our first agenda item. Should I do that first? Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I decided, I decided, I'm gonna do public participation first. So per school committee policy, B E D H, members of the public are invited to speak for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the agenda. For items on the agenda, the public is asked to please wait for that item. The committee does not typically respond to comments during public participation. Is there anyone here to speak on something that's not on the agenda?
Yes. Steve Ballard from Boxborough. Yes, I had something to say about the meeting we had a couple of meetings back in September about the lockdown. And that's because I know on December 1st, you said, "We're not going to be listening, talking about the police in schools program, the SRO program until then," which means effectively, you have decided as a school committee to defer to the administration's wish to keep the police in school program for this entire calendar year. Because effectively, if you start talking about it on December 1st, which is what Kira said, you're not going to finish before the holiday. So we've got the police in schools. So the question though, there were a lot of things that came up at that meeting that some of you said, and I wanted to clear up, clear the air. I think what Tessa said was absolutely correct, and that we need to hear the whole story. And we didn't hear the whole story. And the whole story, her most of it is already known to the administration, and a lot of it's known to me. And some of you don't know. But, so there are inconsistencies, and I want to go through this kind of like a lawyer for three minutes with no notes. But first off, you know, the questions you need to ask yourself and ask the administration are related to the law. Because you have, whether you have consent, whether you have reasonable suspicion, or whether you have probable cause, those are different levels of scrutiny you have to give to the interrogation or questioning of these six black men that were taken out of their classrooms. I don't know if there were six different classrooms, but they were taken out. That's about a half of the black population of any class. There are 47 black students in the entire school, so about 10 per class. So I'd assume five are boys and five are girls.
You have one minute.
So they were taken out. Why were they taken out if there was a suspicion, reasonable suspicion, which allows the school officials to question even without probable cause, which is probably why that happened? Why were they taken out of classrooms because they were identified by doing so? And then put in another place if that's what happened? And then questioned, it wasn't clear when Mr. Light said they were questioned by school officials and the police. Who was doing the questioning? Who made the questions? Was there consent? It's clear he gave notice to the parents. But it's very unclear, and I think it's likely, there was, they were not given notice of their right to say, "I don't want to be searched. I want my parent here, my lawyer here." And with Commonwealth versus Carey, which is the mass case of 1990 that governs us, it's pretty clear they don't have to give that advice. So you can use the police to formulate the questions and have Mr. Light or Joanie ask the questions, and then you get away from the problems that you might have.
Okay, that's time. Thank you.
So there are a lot of questions, I will send them to you.
That's time. Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent's update.
All right, so this is a very, very brief update tonight. We are, just want to draw your attention, we sent this out to families. But coming out of the incident at the high school where we had to do a shelter in place, I think we had a lot of families with questions about what different terms mean, how things work. So we actually put together a guide for families and had that translated into multiple languages so that, you know, family members could actually understand some of the terminology and practices that we have in our schools to the extent that we can discuss safety procedures publicly. So we sent that out. I'm going to send that out again tomorrow so families have it, and it's posted to our website. Second, I just want to thank, you know, Julie La Lumiere again, but everyone else who worked so hard on the grand opening of Boardwalk campus. It was a great community event, really well attended. It was great to be able to get some of our members of the community in who wouldn't otherwise be in our schools. So thank you to everyone here who participated in that. Hopefully it was a fun day for you and families if they attended. Just again, want to thank Julie for all the work she did. And the next one is a public service announcement that we're sending out on behalf of the state. Massachusetts has moved to a next-generation 911 system, and so they've added a couple features that we want to make sure families and hopefully our students become aware of. One is there's now a text to 911 feature, and that allows a person that's unable to speak or hear communication to communicate with 911 via a text message to the dispatcher. The second is called a silent call procedure, which allows a person that's unable to speak to call 911 when the call is answered by the dispatcher, and then actually press digits on their phone either for police, fire, or ambulance, 1, 2, or 3, so that the dispatcher can immediately send help to the location. So we just want to get that word out to families. And then finally, just want to make sure people know we have our community coffees going. And the next one is October 26th at 8:30 a.m., and that's virtual. So thank you.
Okay, so hopefully everyone's okay. We're going to move the pool naming up and do that first. So Ben.
Great. Thank you, Acting Chairwoman. Good evening, everybody. Good evening fellow school committee members and to the general public. My name is Benjamin Blumenthal. I am a Weston High School graduate from 1993 and a former swimmer on the Weston Red Tide. Swam from 89 to 93 under Coach Foley here, who is in attendance tonight. I'm pleased to submit, excuse me, I'm pleased to submit a unanimous recommendation of the pool renaming subcommittee that the high school swimming pool be renamed or named the Coach Jeff Johnson Pool. Coach Johnson was a renowned swimming coach here at Acton, Boxborough for over 40 years, and achieved over 500 dual meet wins and multiple state titles, much to the chagrin of us Weston Wildcat swimmers. He founded the Patriot Swim Club and was recognized several times as Coach of the Year in the Boston Globe, The Herald, and The Lowell Sun. He received the David H. Robertson Excellence in Coaching Award back in 2005, and the NISC-A Outstanding Service Award in 2015. Individuals who supported renaming the pool after Coach Johnson have also cited his tremendous dedication to each individual who participated in the swimming program, and his impact on their development as athletes and as young adults. Even as a swimmer in Weston High School, I can say without any equivocation that Coach Johnson also had an impact on the level that we swam as Weston Wildcats. This petition was sent to the policy subcommittee, which met on March 10th, 2020. We further discussed it. It went back and forth a little while. Ultimately, based on the overwhelming support for renaming the pool after Coach Johnson, at our meeting on October 12th, 2022, the pool renaming subcommittee voted unanimously to recommend that the school committee vote to name the high school pool after Coach Johnson as the Coach Jeff Johnson Pool, in honor of his many contributions to the community here at Acton, Boxborough. I would like to submit a motion that, and I quote, "In recognition of his outstanding contributions to the students and the communities of Acton, Boxborough, the high school swimming pool be named in honor for former Coach Jeff Johnson as the Coach Jeff Johnson Swimming Pool." Thank you.
Second.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there any discussion amongst the committee? Yep, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank the subcommittee for their work on putting the recommendation together. And then secondly, I'd like to thank the community members who have diligently come year after year for the past three years to advocate for this change. Really appreciate both your patience and your perseverance, so thank you for that.
Anyone else wanting to say something? Go ahead, Jen.
I just want to say that I think it's a wonderful testament to this coach, and you guys have made so clear how many lives he touched in a positive way. And I think that's, you know, an amazing thing for him and for his family and for his memory, and an inspiration hopefully to coaches everywhere, to the impact that they can have on the kids that they coach. So thank you so much, and it's very exciting to be able to take this vote finally.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak before we take the vote? I noticed some of you came with, please feel free.
Thank you very much. Jeez, I thought you said I had a half an hour, but no. I'll be extremely brief. As I mentioned to the superintendent, I was a swim coach down at Weston for 35 years and had the pleasure of competing with Jeff, against Jeff, in Acton, Boxborough. And I've been asked to speak on behalf of NISC-A, which is the Eastern Mass Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association, which Jeff was a very active member. In addition, I'm sure you're well-versed in everything that he did for the youth of Acton and Boxborough. But he made all of the coaches around here better, because if you wanted to be in the hunt, you know, you had to go through Acton, Boxborough. And I know from a personal perspective, he made me a better coach. I studied, read my journals a lot more. And in addition to being a great coach, he was a great mentor to many of the young aspiring coaches, including a guy that's sitting behind me who's now the coach at Wayland High School, and who is now taking over as the all-time dual meet winningest coach, and that's Michael Foley, who was a close relation and a very good friend of Jeff. So he's helped grow the profession. And two of the awards that Ben mentioned are on the national level, the David Robertson Award and the NISC-A Outstanding Service Award. And having attended many of the national conventions with Jeff, even there, he was revered. He had a lot to say, I shouldn't say he had a lot to say, but what he said was well-received. And coaches from Midwest, even the West Coast, were always trying to pick his brain and steal an idea. So I couldn't think of a more worthy project, and I know there was a three-year waiting period, and hopefully that will come to fruition this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I did not see anyone else. Go ahead, you want to say something, Peter?
So I just, I don't know if all of the committee members know, but Jeff's wife, Marge, is with us tonight. Marge also worked for the district for 24 years in our ODP program at our high school. So, you know, we're equally grateful, Marge, to everything that you've given to AB, and we're just really pleased as a subcommittee to be able to forward Jeff as an extraordinarily worthy candidate for having a facility named after him. So thank you, Marge.
Okay, if I don't have any more comments, I think that we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Done.
As a follow-up, I will connect with our facilities manager, Steve Deasy, who is actually a former athletic director for Acton, Boxborough for a long number of years. He's come back out of retirement for us this year and is helping us, but I will connect with him in terms of getting, you know, a naming plaque and things like that in place, and then we'll certainly reach out and let you know when we're going to do something. Thank you.
Okay, so next thing on our agenda. Okay, we are doing these. It's up to Peter. We're doing the overview of the superintendent's evaluation process. Oh, not Peter, Marie. Peter, Marina.
So Kira asked me to do a brief overview of the superintendent evaluation process for you all. So I'm using the slides that MAS-C has put out about the process. As you know, this is one of the important roles that the school committee fills. And so just to talk a little bit about the process and the goals, it's early in the year. After this, at this meeting, Peter's going to be presenting the district goals to you. And so they kind of dovetail together, and we wanted to make sure you know in advance what you're going to be looking for throughout the year. So the goal alignment, the goals that are presented to you, look at student achievement. There are, teachers have goals, administrators have goals, the superintendent has goals, and they all align with the overarching goals in the district improvement plan. So we've worked hard to get all of these things aligned, and you're going to see the themes throughout the district improvement plan, the strategy that you approved, and the goals that are ongoing. Just so, to remind you all, last spring, you decided to move Peter to a two-year cycle. So this is sort of the middle of that two-year cycle. Goals were set a year ago. You did the mid-cycle report in the spring, and now we're updating goals for this year's goals. And then in this spring, you'll be doing what's called the summative report. So the evaluation system for all professional educators in Massachusetts is really the same. So all teachers have the same process, all administrators have the same process, superintendent has the same process. And the goal is really to make the evaluation system effective and linked to student achievement, and to improve educator professional practice, and to have criteria that all educators are working toward for, to achieve proficiency or exemplary status in education. All right, so superintendent evaluation. Some components of it may be new to school committees. Again, it is aligned with the teacher and administrator evaluation system. And many superintendents have annual evaluations. Once you've passed the three-year mark, you might move the superintendent to every other year or a two-year cycle, which is what this committee has decided to do. So there are three key components. There's a five-step cycle. The tools are around goals and standards, and I'm going to talk a little bit about each of those. And then there's a multi-part rating system. So at the end of this year, you'll be asked to give ratings on goals and standards. So we have a self-assessment, we have analysis and goal setting and plan development. So we're in the goal setting. We're kind of in the mid-cycle goal setting now, the implementation of the plan. The formative assessment is what you did in June, that's the mid-cycle assessment. So for educators on a one-year plan, the formative assessment is done in the middle of the year. And for educators who are experienced, and for teachers, it's those that have professional status, they go to a two-year plan, and the formative assessment is done at the end of the first year, which is where we are. We're now starting the second year, we're updating goals. And at the end of this year, there will be a summative evaluation process. So the setting of goals, we look for SMART goals. And for the superintendent, superintendent sets a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and district improvement goals. The SMART goals, which many of you have seen in other places, are specific, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous, realistic, and results-focused, timed and tracked. SMART goals have key actions and benchmarks. So the standards and indicators of effective professional practice, so this is important. So for all educators, there are four standards. For the superintendent, it's instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. So in your packet, I put the whole rubric. You'll see the rubric has more than 30 indicators and elements to look at. That's a little bit overwhelming, 30-plus indicators and elements. Focus on the four categories, the four standards. You're going to be asked to give ratings on each of the four standards. And before you get to that point, we will highlight probably five or six key indicators or elements that relate to our strategic plan and our goals. And so we'll ask you to sort of focus on those five or six, but they will fall within instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. So those are the four things throughout the year you should sort of be paying attention to. When you look for evidence for the superintendent evaluation, you're looking at things that are brought to school committee, presentations that came to school committee, documents and communications that go out to the community, actions on goals, reports on goals. So they will all fall into these four categories, but the evidence you see throughout the year. So we're asking you, as you come to meetings, as you read the packets, as you look at the communications, to be thinking ahead to how that will lead to how you will evaluate the superintendent. So the rubric has standards. So those four standards we just talked about, under the standards are sort of subheaders, which we call indicators, and under that are elements. And that's where you sort of get to the 32 or so pieces. This is just one example of an indicator and element from the instructional leadership standard. The entire rubric is in your packet, there's a link in the documents, there's a link on the evaluator website. For every element, there is a definition of what it means to be exemplary, what it means to be proficient, what it means to need improvement, and what it means to be unsatisfactory. So for each of the standards, you want to sort of look at proficiency, you want to look at exemplary, needs improvement, and sort of see where you believe the superintendent falls in those areas. For goals, you're going to be asked to determine whether the goal exceeds, whether the goal was exceeded, whether it was met, whether there was significant progress made, some progress, or did not meet the goal. All right? The standards are going to be asked to rate exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. So in the end, you're going to be asked to give ratings on four standards, and ratings on the number of goals that are presented to you. So the professional practice goal, the student learning goal, and the district goals. Altogether, then, an overall summative rating will be given. And the overall summative rating is really done by the compilation of all the members of the committee, but the, you can look at the four standards and the goals, and depending on how many proficient, how many exemplaries, et cetera, you'll determine for yourself what you think the overall summative rating will be. And then the chair is going to compile all those and come up with the overall ratings. So again, three key components. There's the five-step cycle, there's the two-part tool, the tools are the SMART goals and the performance rubric, and then there's the ratings system. Ratings on goal, ratings on standards, and rating in the summative rating. All right, how does it work? You're working with the superintendent to draft the goals. That's part of what's happening tonight. Before you get to the time when you need to do the ratings, he will identify standards, indicators, and elements from the rubric that we're going to focus on that are aligned with the goals. All standards must be evaluated, there'll be a deciding on where the weighting is going to be with the standards, discuss artifacts of evidence, and like I said, that's really up to you to do throughout the year, is to really weigh what you're seeing throughout the year. And then for documents, there'll be the goals document, think about outcomes, we're looking for student achievement and outcomes. There'll be agreement on the applicable elements in the rubric. Don't go with too many. Like I said, it's, you know, around half a dozen or so. Determine which standards are going to have the most weight. Are there any areas that need special attention? Talk about evidence. What will help the committee understand the work? And hopefully, the laying out of the calendar for the school year between the chair and the superintendent will help the committee understand the work. Create a year-long agenda which Peter and Kira have in place. What's required, what's optional. You have to have goals in three areas. There need to be district improvement goals, a student learning goal, and a professional practice goal. You need to give ratings in four areas. Again, it's instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture, and an overall summative rating. You do not need to use all elements and indicators. You can weigh standards differently, you can determine that some are more important than others. You work through the timing of the evaluation cycle, which you did last year, and how the evaluation is used, and then the process. In terms of the process, what you're going to do to complete the evaluation is each of you is going to independently complete your own individual evaluation, and then that's going to all be given to the chair, who will create a composite evaluation, which generally includes a narrative. And then that will be discussed and voted on by the full committee at a public meeting. All right? And that is a public process, it's done at a public meeting. And there are links in the slides to, but we put the documents and the links in your But we put the documents and the links in your packet. So that's an overview of the process. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. So if there are no questions, then we're going to move to the goals.
So while Beth's pulling slides up, you know, I presented goals at the last meeting, so I'm not going to do a long presentation on this, but I'm just going to give you some summary slides to refresh your memory. You know, I didn't hear a lot of feedback that substantially changed the direction of any goals. I think the feedback I heard was be careful of how many things you're telling us you want to do. So I think you'll see that reflected in the slides here. Please. Yeah, let's do mine. We'll do goals. Yeah. And if you can just hit play. Yeah. Great. Thank you. So just a quick refresher on this. These were presented last time. This is just a summary. So I proposed three district goals. These are continuation of prior work that we had been doing with our district strategy. Remember that we are trying to begin a gradual shift to outcome-oriented goals in addition to having some output-oriented action steps that we've traditionally taken. There are three overarching areas of these goals: social, emotional, learning, mental and behavioral health, multi-tiered systems of support to improve our literacy and mathematics outcomes for students, and around culturally responsive practices. So there's also one additional professional practice goal, which is just the superintendent's goal, not necessarily a district-wide goal. This was the update of the strategy without the triangles and squares and circles that Adam enjoyed last time. Goal number one was to improve the social, emotional, mental, and behavioral health outcomes for students by shifting our environments, practices, and support so that students can more effectively access learning, cultivate constructive relationships. If you remember, we already did our first goal presentation around this work, and Heather Stouck, and we had Cartwheel Care, we had a number of our educators, we had the Lifts program from Leslie Institute for Trauma Sensitivity present to give you a little flavor for this goal. I'm not going to go into all of the outcomes right now. Goal number two was to increase the number of students who are on a pathway to proficiency and literacy in mathematics through implementation of a multi-tiered system of supports. Obviously, we've heard a lot about MTSS, our multi-tiered system of supports, over the last few years. This is the year where we're trying to take all of the work that we've been doing in the background to build this system out and start to see some improved outcomes for our students through the use of that system. So I had provided you in the last meeting a little bit of a data snapshot of that. We're going to actually have Deb Bukas and her team are going to be coming a little bit later in the early winter to come back and present one presentation around the literacy work we're doing and looking at some of the student data and our outcomes there. And then we're going to have her back in, I believe, January on mathematics. I forget the exact timing, but we'll be doing that with you. Goal number three is improving student, staff, and family sense of belonging by strengthening school culture and climate, diversifying the professional staff, and intentionally implementing culturally responsive instructional practices and materials. And we're going to have a presentation coming up, I think, in a couple of weeks focused on this topic and sharing some of the work that we're doing this year with you. So again, there are four goals that I'm proposing for this year. One is a student learning goal, which is the district goal number two, around the outcomes in literacy and mathematics. Then there's district goal number one, around social, emotional, learning, mental, and behavioral health. Goal number three, around culturally responsive practices. And then my professional practice goal is actually focused more on community engagement, thinking about kind of the course of the last couple of years and the pandemic and all of the impact on our ability to engage with the community. I would like to increase the number of ways in which we engage with families and our broader community to enlist and sustain support for the school district and to develop a broader community understanding of our goals. So that's some of the work that we're doing. I think I announced this last time, but we've sent this out to both senior centers in Acton and Boxborough. I'm really excited. We actually are busing our senior citizens from Acton and Boxborough in on our yellow school buses coming up in November to the high school, where we're going to do a little tour of the high school. We are going to do a brief presentation on some of the district's work and what the high school's looking at and doing. And then we're going to do a lunch in small groups between our senior citizens and our high school students so they can talk just about their experiences back and forth between what school was like then and now, and learn a little bit from each other. So we're trying to plan a little bit of those types of activities with different members of the community that don't typically get into our schools. So just to give you a little preview of some of the work. And that is it. And, you know, happy to answer any questions, but what we are looking for tonight, hopefully, is approval of those goals so we can continue to move forward. Once I get approval of these goals, I will share with you the school improvement plans for your comment. And then we will... You know, you have about a week to comment on school improvement plans because I want to get those back to principals so that they can finalize them and move forward. And then, you know, we already have developed a timeline where the goal-setting work actually will be done before we leave for the summer coming up this year. So I have a whole timeline for that that I'm working with, with the administrative team. So we know this is the last year kind of of this pandemic goal-setting process where it got late, but we want to shift so that all of the school improvement plans, professional, you know, learning plans, and the district goals are all pretty much set in the spring so that it's not something that has to be, you know, dragged into the fall.
Any questions, comments? Yep.
Sorry, I didn't attend. I missed the last meeting, so I didn't... I'm not aware of this. So a quick question is about the multi-tier system. Who are the beneficiary of the multi-tier system?
Well, we believe all students are a beneficiary of a multi-tier system because it actually allows educators to look in teams at student learning data and then think about how they want to group students for some supplemental supports or enrichment activities, things like that.
No other comments, questions?
Thanks, Peter. I appreciate the revisions and the clarity. I think for us as a school committee, one of the challenges that we face is finding a clear and concise way to communicate these goals out to the rest of the community and the stakeholders. I think it's really important to have it all detailed here, and I think that as we work with you over the course of the next few months, as we get ready to present our plans and budgets to the communities, we'll want to have a real concise way of explaining both what is we're doing and why it's important so that we can justify what we need.
Yeah, thanks, Adam. I definitely think we need an elevator speech version of this when we start talking to the community. But as me sitting here talking to you as, you know, you're my evaluators, I have to give you the details.
No one else? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the goals.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's goals.
So that was Ben, and then Jenny seconded?
Just I think it needs to be superintendent goals and district goals.
I'd like to amend my motion to include the superintendent's goals and district goals.
Okay, great. And Jenny? Okay, cool. So, whoops, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. You have your marching orders, Peter. Okay. So now we're moving over, I believe, Dave. New business. I think we're still in new business. I think Dave is going to come over and give us a budget update.
And Dave, I know there were only about five or six slides included in the packet, but Beth was able to load the other 42 slides onto the slideshow, so it should be all set.
Did you get the 14 on OPEP?
Yeah, including the ones I added for you.
We could take this show on the road, maybe. Or not. So you have a memo that is... I didn't think, I didn't feel necessary to go in slide version what's in the memo. It's essentially the same format that I've done in the past and should read pretty comprehensively for how we ended up in FY '22. So just to go over some highlights, here's in pictures how we did revenues versus expenses. Note the scale doesn't go down to zero. It's a pretty narrow band. And this is pictorially what's in the memo. So revenue surplus, a little over $400,000. The biggest pieces are the state transportation reimbursement rate was higher than we originally thought. We got in a lot more Medicaid reimbursement money due to some rule changes regarding COVID. And we made a lot less investment income than we budgeted. We had been taking down the budget for a year since we knew that rates were down. We didn't take them down far enough. The good news is this year, that has turned around again. But for last year, we didn't do so well, budget to actual for investment income. The expenditure surplus, again, there are a number of pages in the memo that talk about the details. The biggest items to the good were personnel. Again, there was some COVID-related one-time funding, excuse me, in personnel costs, reimbursements, and special ed tuition and transportation both beat budget pretty significantly as I had been talking to you last year. On the downside, we had the final payment to EDCO to liquidate our liability for the collaborative. EdTech was over budget and facilities over budget. We continue to face the challenge of replacing, maintaining, and providing for a significant number of devices that we added primarily during the COVID years, and that remains a challenge for EdTech facilities. Mostly at the end of the year was impacted by fuel rate increases, as I'm sure you're aware. That's that. I'll just ask questions because there are only about five slides. So questions on FY '22 before I move on?
And I'll apologize because, Dave, I do not see your memo in the packet. So I'm not sure what happened with that, but just so you know, committee members don't have that, we'll make sure we get that out to you, you know, right away.
Okay. Sorry about that. Maybe I did need 46 slides. The next one is a summary, just a couple of years back, looking at budget to actual revenues and expenses. And you can see the lighter blue, which is the actual in both cases, was favorable to the darker blue. You just have to look at it backwards when, on the expenditure side, the favorability is less expenditures, where on the revenue side, favorability is a higher number. You can see that every year, there's favorable outcomes, generally within about 1%. It does vary which side is the winner. So you have years like FY '21 where revenues came in pretty flat and expenditures came in significantly under budget. And they vary from year to year, as I said. So that's just a quick summary of revenue expenditure surplus history. I'm going to make a comment about that in another slide. E and D, this one's a little busy, but I'll walk you through what to focus on. If you look at the gray bars, that's the balance at the end of the year of E and D. You can see that when regionalization started, you were down at about $1 million, and that grew very significantly, about almost $1 million a year for a couple of years, and peaked in FY '19. We've been drawing it down on a net basis since then. I do think it's still strong from a historical standpoint, but obviously, there's a tension being made, being placed on the balance of E and D. The other bars talk about the uses. The uses are two things. Generally, the red is what's used to offset the budget. There are two orange bars in FY '19 and '20. Those respectively were the feasibility study for the recently completed Boardwalk Campus Project. And in FY '20, $1 million was transferred to the newly created Capital Stabilization Fund. Otherwise, you can see in the first years of full regionalization, the green bar is significantly above, and that's what caused the balance to increase so dramatically in those first few years. The last few years, the turnback has not quite matched what's been used, but it still is fairly close. And the comment at the bottom, the eight-year average replenishment is about $1 million and a quarter. So when we talk about how much is being used, and $1 million five was used for this year, FY '23, it's not like it's $1 million five against zero. It's $1 million five, excuse me, against an average of $1 million and a quarter.
I want to ask a question, Dave, before you move off of this one. So the eight-year average of 1.2 million per year is roughly 1% of our operating budget?
Well, it is more because we only exceeded $100 million in FY '23, and that number isn't even up there yet. So at the beginning of, when you first regionalized, I believe it was 77 million. That's a lot. A million and a quarter is a lot more than 1% of 77 million. But what to remember is it's not expense turnbacks to expense budget. There's two sides here. There's revenue surpluses and expenditure surpluses. Do you add them both as a percentage of the budget? You can, but doing that, you'll know that it's a little bit more than 1%.
I think, well, my question was, so thank you for clarifying that. My question is, coming in at around 1% of a budget, how is that in terms of best practice for a district like ours?
I don't have an authoritative answer on that, what's best practice? But logically, having done this job for a number of years, if you can get to... It's not like we start the year and, oh, boy, we've got a $1 million budget. I hope we're close. We're going to be close. We know the employees generally, a lot of the major budget drivers, debt is locked in, but there are a number of variable factors that can happen. Personnel doesn't get hired until about now, but they're budgeted for in January. Special ed tuitions will continue to be in flux through June. They were determined back in December. So there's a lot of things that can happen. Generally, I'm thrilled when you tell me that if we're within 1%, that's within shouting distance, and that was John Peterson's conviction all along. The closer you get to coming in at budget, there will be less turnback, and you would have to budget it tighter from the get-go, and you'd lose some flexibility, in my opinion. So having the history that you have with turning back, let's just say, conservatively, $1 million plus each year, I think that's, there's some stability. You look at the green bars across the graph, and they're arguably the closest in this entire graph, which gives me some comfort that I wasn't here for the first few years, but it looks like the budgeting practices that took place have carried through. And there's some, whether it's best practice or not, I'd say consistency is a good practice too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that idea, I remember when I started here, you know, I was essentially coming in on the FY '19 budget, and I remember there being a little bit of feedback. And I remember there being a little bit of feedback from the committee and some of the community members and finance committees about, you know, wanting us to budget closer to actual. And so we had taken some steps intentionally in kind of that '19, '20, '20, you know, those years to try to really approximate our budget. And we did some things internally in the budget development process to try and get closer. So that was intentional, that you didn't see that 1.5 million threshold continue.
My predecessor, and this is not a criticism, a constructive one if at worst, never budgeted for other revenues. So we have Medicaid reimbursement and investment income for two of the ones that are significant. And they've averaged a half a billion dollars at least over this period of time. It used to be budget of zero. That's why in those first couple of years, the balance in E and D went up so significantly because when you turn back a half a million dollar revenue surplus against a zero budget, it goes right to the bottom line. Sorry?
So still, I mean, I thought it's 1% of the, like, variance is a pretty good job. But I was, if we can maintain zero variance, then it will help us to actually, to clear the next year's, to get a support for the next year's budget, right? So we can save an extra another $1 million. So, I mean, that's just to say. But mainly, my question is actually, is do you cite, you quote this year's $1 million savings mainly due to the Medicare reimbursement or whatever, something? But I just wonder, so from, in the past few years, you see $1 million saving, right, always? So you cite the head account, saving, whatever, something? So there's multiple factors, right, big contributors? Do you see those contributors are consistent over the years, or is it totally unpredictable?
It's the latter. It's the latter. Special ed tuitions last year were significantly under budget, so much so that we were able to not use as much circuit breaker as was originally budgeted. Medicaid reimbursement, out of the blue, came in significantly higher than what we thought. On the other side, the cost for gas and gasoline went up significantly in the second half of the year. Hadn't counted on that. So there are things that are going to happen, to Adam's point about what's best practice. You seriously aim for the center of the dartboard, but you try and hit the dartboard, if that metaphor works. Oops. I thought I'd put in here before walking away, I've skipped over '23 and gone right to '24 because budget season '24, as we all know, is upon us. If we look at recent data about E and D usage and turnbacks and surpluses, here's what I've noticed. We turn back via budget surplus of $1,001,000 last year, FY '22. That's the last information that we will have about turnbacks, objective information, before we set the FY '24 budget. We were using 1.5 million of E and D to defray the FY '23 budget. We're going to need to come up with a number that replicates the $1,005,000 that we used in '23 for FY '24. Consider using the 1.1 million of FY '22 surplus. Why? It's an objective and definable strategy that we can say, that's the last piece of information that we knew was turned back. The benefit, as I see it, it's below the eight-year average replenishment, meaning that if the replenishment average continues, we'll do better than $1,001,000 of usage, and E and D will creep back up again if we continue to follow that strategy and continue to replenish at a greater rate. If it doesn't, I would maintain that's what you use E and D for when things break unfavorably. So this is just a starting point. It's a suggestion from me. It's certainly not a policy recommendation. But that's probably what we're thinking of where the first pass of the administrative budget recommendation might come out. So if you see it at $1,001,000, we'll point back to this slide and say, that's the objective basis for a starting point for E and D for FY '24. And then lastly, as I was looking through this slide last year, so the first three columns, '19, '20, '21, that's what was presented here a year ago, and things did not look good for our major programs that have revolving funds. But due to some, really fortuitous circumstances in FY '22, we're back, the pieces, the individual components, sizes may have shifted, but grand total, we're about where we were two years ago, which I think is a good thing that in most cases, and again, it's in the memo, and I apologize why you don't have it, the conclusion was that most of these programs have stabilized and should not be experiencing hemorrhaging losses like they were in '20 and '21. So if they've stabilized, we're probably in a good place and aren't going to be looking to have to replenish balances. I'll say that in FY '22, the two major contributors, you can see the school lunch component in dark blue, that benefited from a year of universal free meals, breakfast and lunch, which continued at FY '23. So if I do this slide next year, that bar will likely have grown again. The other one is the yellow and the light blue, community ed and extended day, benefited from a significant inflow of funds from Acton, from its ARPA allocation. And lastly, Peter made this comment at the ribbon cutting, but thought it was worth me noting as well. Ben Franklin at the top just represents 100% of what the taxpayers were going to have to pay in principal and interest, grand total, over 30 years, on the bonds that we issued two and a half years ago. I reached out to our financial advisor and said, if we had done this the conventional way, meaning we short-term borrow during construction and then issue bonds once the project is complete, given what bonds are going for now versus then, what do you think the difference would have been? And they estimated to be $33 million of savings to the taxpayers. And that was, I'm going to flip ahead and just say, I looked for a slide, a meme, better to be lucky than good, and I didn't like anything I saw. So I just said, we'll just leave this up as the meme. As a real good thing, it's not $33 million that you can spend on anything. It's money that doesn't have to be collected from the taxpayers to pay a much higher rate on the school bonds.
But just before questions, Dave, can you just clarify? I know you talked about the E and D from prior years, and you talked about, you know, we're going to turn back about 1.1 million. What are we anticipating our certified E and D balance to come in at when we get it back from the state?
We did a calculation. It came out right at $3 million.
Okay, so that ends up being what percent, you think, of the budget?
That's a little under, well, 3 on 102 million is probably 2.8%.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, questions, comments? Yep, Jenny?
So what is the, of the slides that you have already put up there, what are our decisions concerning all-day kindergarten for this coming budget cycle? How does that impact, I mean, that doesn't impact anything that we saw, but I mean, what are your thoughts on that impact to the revolving fund that includes all-day kindergarten?
So the plan, the default plan was we continue to charge $1,800 for the upgrade to all-day K tuition. That's the default plan. To move off that means that all of those costs, represented by the tuition money that defrays those costs, would have to revert to the budget.
Through the chair to Dave. Could you go forward one slide, please? So looking at the revolving fund, you mentioned that one of the reasons why FY '22 looks more in line with previous fiscal years is as a result of the influx of ARPA funds. Are you able to break down how much of, you know, extended day and community ed in particular are benefiting from ARPA funds versus actual enrollments within those programs as, you know, true revolving funds? Not saying that they're not true revolving funds, but...
Yes, it's in the memo. It's in my notes. You don't have the memo. I didn't read it off my notes. It was a $600,000 inflow from the Towns' ARPA, from the Acton ARPA allocation. And it helped to restore the balances to where they were, but those two programs were both above water for FY '22 without the ARPA funds.
Okay, excellent, yeah. I was just curious to see, because with enrollments, the more, you know, individuals who are enrolled in those programs, the more money that's flowing into those revolving accounts, which means we can use them, you know, ad hoc during the fiscal year and into next year.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
No other questions, comments? All right, thanks, Dave. Thank you very much. Look forward to even more information coming out. Okay, so Peter, you have something, you have budget information.
Yeah, so we're actually just, we wanted to get a little bit of feedback from you as a committee, as a preliminary step toward the development of next year's or the FY '24 budget. One of the things we've seen over the last few years is that the school committee has a policy, which is IIBA, without my reading glasses on, that sets guidelines for elementary class sizes. And so the guidelines that the school committee has, you know, had since 2014 for elementary class sizes are in kindergarten, 18 to 20 students in grades 1 through 3. It's 20 to 22 students, and in grades 4 through 6, it's 22 to 24 students. Since regionalization, the school committee has not taken a stance with regard to secondary school class sizes. And we believe that that's important guidance that the school committee can give us as we look to develop the FY '24 budget around what will provide high-quality education to our students within the, you know, fiscal constraints of our communities. And so we are asking our policy sub to come back and revise this policy and be able to, you know, have the school committee vote, you know, recommended guidelines for class sizes for grade 7 and 8, and then again, 9 through 12. In our initial proposal, I think the administration believes that, you know, keep maintaining the current upper elementary grade class sizes of 22 to 24 would be appropriate for 7 through 12 as well. We know there's always going to be fluctuation, and, you know, the great book, The End of Average, so there's nothing that's average. But we believe that's a reasonable secondary school class size to target as well. I think, you know, as we talk with teachers and educators, and we've started to do that, educators will always prefer smaller class sizes. You know, we know that part of the job that we have as a district is to balance kind of what we want is best for kids with the, you know, fiscal constraints that we have in front of us. So we are seeking some feedback, so I just wanted to open it up for initial discussion. Right now, I think our administration would continue to propose 22 to 24 students in the secondary classes, consistent with upper elementary, but would love to hear some preliminary feedback from you. And then it will be going to policy sub, and Jenny and I have already talked about that.
So, you know, for this, I really would love to get some feedback from the educators because, you know, there's a huge variation, obviously, between teaching 7th grade classes and teaching high school classes, the way that the junior high does it currently with teams. It seems like, you know, that seems more, that seems like less of a complicated proposition to me. But with the leveling and the different courses, I know that, you know, math teachers and science teachers, probably all of them, teach a variety of courses and maybe at different levels. And it's just, you know, I wouldn't be able to understand what the impacts of larger class sizes have for, and maybe I'm just making assumptions about junior high, too. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we're going to get some educator input on this for our consideration before we, you know, I'm not an educator, so I don't want to, I'd like to have some direction from people who are.
Yeah, we've initially met with the department leaders at the junior high and high school to talk that through. The junior high is already programmed pretty much where this recommendation is. The high school class sizes have been trending smaller because the school has gotten smaller, but maintained the same level of staffing generally as it had. So we'll do a class size presentation coming up on that. I think, you know, because we have to time it with the NASDAQ projections, it's probably going to be December 1st by the time we actually present the class sizes that are current. But we can certainly talk about a process to get some feedback from educators.
Thanks, Jane. It's a great comment. I'd also like to see if we can get some feedback from the students as to how they are able to manage within the classrooms that they're in. So if you're doing any research around what the educators have to say, I would also like to be able to hear from the students about the communities that they're in, and more importantly, how they're feeling about the more difficult curriculum that they're dealing with and having to be able to potentially fight for attention of their teachers.
I'm going to try to make a comment without, like, absolutely coughing. I promise I don't have COVID. I've been tested like 18 times. I don't have anything other than second-grade germs. So I guess I'm curious at the high school in terms of, you know, one of the biggest things that we've always noticed when we get the high school presentation or when we look at the class enrollment is that there are some honors and AP classes that have like upwards of 30 students in them. And there are some remediation sort of type of classes that have very few kids in them. And I'm just curious, like, it does work differently than the junior high because all those teachers are working together, and there's more of the multi-tiered system of support already kind of in place, right? That's not necessarily what we're doing in the high school, nor is that necessarily appropriate for the high school. I don't know, but I would just be curious how that's going to affect things because even though I know we've been working on leveling or de-leveling or unleveling, or however you want to look at it, those are some big discrepancies in terms of what we see. And assuming that we were going towards more of a less leveled, you know, high school, I would think that it wouldn't, other than evening out class sizes, I wouldn't think that it would change, like, the really high classes, you would think would move towards a lower, but if, a lower number. But if you're talking about, I mean, it's just so complicated with the levels to even think about it, you know? Because I do think that there's this perception that students who are in honors and AP classes don't need to have a small class because they can just do the work themselves, whereas I feel like that's probably an incorrect assumption. But it's something that we've done for a long time. Those classes all have more kids in them. So, I don't know. Those are the kind of things that go through my head when I think about level, class size guidelines at the high school because there's so much wrapped into the size of those classes rather than it just being like, oh, we have this many kids that need to take English, and we have this many teachers, so we'll divide it into that many sections, you know? It's a little, like, that's how it works at the junior high, essentially, which makes a ton of sense and makes things easy and makes it easy to look at class size guidelines. But there's also not as leveling, as much leveling at the junior high as at the high school. So those are just my initial thoughts.
Thanks. I have two thoughts. First is actually around the junior high, and I think that that one may actually be a more difficult one to codify in policy because if you get to a certain outer limit of our recommendations, then you're talking about removing a whole team, and that's pretty substantial.
substantial. So I think as the policy subcommittee looks at that, you have to take under consideration what maybe a larger band for the junior high in recognition of how the teaming works and how reducing staff isn't just taking one or two people out, it actually becomes taking out a whole team and how that may substantially affect class sizes. So that's my first comment. My second comment is more of a cold washcloth to some of the comments from my colleagues on the other side, which is, yes, we need to hear from our students and our teachers, but we also need to understand the fiscal constraints that we're under. And so I think if we ask any educator and any student, they would love to be in a very small class with direct attention from their teachers. And I would like the same as well, but I would also like to make sure that we're putting together recommendations that last a little bit longer, make a more sustainable budget for us because we're trending in the wrong direction. Our towns are going to have a difficulty supporting this. And having some guidelines that talk about, on the average, this is what we want to see, death of average, thanks, John Peterson's still in our heads, but on the average, this is what we want to see.
Hey, John!
And we want to see, yeah. But it's Marley. But, I mean, we need to take into consideration that over the long term, we need to provide guidance for our administration as well. That's not just, I mean, I will look for our administration to come to us and say, based on research and based on what we know, this is what's best for our students' learning because they're the experts there. And I think the guidance we have to give is, based on what we know from our community, this is what we're going to be able to fund. And we know that we're going to have peaks and valleys in our enrollment. We know that we're in a valley right now at the high school, and so we have to be really conscious of that because it'll be hard to reduce staffing, it'll be equally as hard to bring staffing back on. But I think we have to make sure that that's the, to me, that's the third leg of the stool of what both Andrew and Jenny said. We need to look at what the community wants, what the students need, and what the teachers need.
I just want to say that I don't disagree with anything you said. I'm just trying to, because I have been thinking about this a little bit, you know, in the past couple of weeks. And from my perspective, I have some understanding of how to think about class size in terms of elementary school classes. And, you know, you can read about that, and that's, you know, pretty much the same across different communities, et cetera. But I feel like, you know, I don't know about other school districts, but I understand how we do things, you know, at the junior high with teams and at the high school. And I just, I don't feel like I understand how these guidelines, you know, what implications they have. So that's what I'm asking for, not, you know, what a teacher, you know, wishes or thinks would be the ideal class size, but just to help inform us as to what even variables this kind of thing triggers that, you know, I don't even know about or would never think of. So it's just to inform our perspective. And I think, you know, teachers, more than anybody, understands the constraints, the budgetary constraints that we're operating under. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, having a whole rash of unintended consequences because we, you know, we don't know what the ramifications are. So I just want to make sure that we are informed to the extent possible by people who actually do this every day and would know way better than us, you know, what the impacts might be.
I totally agree. Thanks.
Have a member of the audience that would like to speak? Sorry, committee member first.
Sorry, John.
Go ahead, Yevhen, sorry.
I have a quick, I mean, just out of curiosity, I guess, like, Peter already mentioned, committee in the long way, in the long run, hope to reduce the class size. And I also see Marie reported last time, this consistent job, right, about class size. So I guess that's, with some good, goodwill, I say, with a reduced class size, we anticipated some outcomes. So I'm just wondering, do we observe that, those outcomes?
I want to make sure I'm understanding. Outcomes for students based on class sizes?
Basically, say, for example, so reducing the class size, we anticipate some good things will happen, right? So say, anything we do observe?
I think, yeah, I think I hear what you're saying.
In the specific goal or whatever, something, right?
Yeah, thinking about reducing class size, what would we anticipate for outcomes?
Yeah, do we?
From that? You know, Deb, chime in. I have not seen a lot of research that unless you have wildly large class sizes, there's a significant correlation between, you know, like, 18 students in a class and 22, 24 students in a class. I've not seen that research. We'll certainly look and compile that and bring it to policy sub as well. Deb, have you seen anything?
Yeah, not in that number range.
You know, and I don't want to confuse it. I think anecdotally, is there a difference in the student experience and the teacher experience? There certainly is. But from like pure, you know, you know, research standpoint, I don't know as though I've seen that.
I thought of that's kind of a past the district goal or whatever, something, right? Reduce the class size. So like here, we also say, we, this is something we wanted to implement, then this is something we anticipate to observe, then this is, everything has to be quantified or measurable outcome, right? So the goal has to be, so I just wonder, do we observe it? It's not about research, right? It's about the, do we observe those? So like, yeah, that's, just curious.
Yeah, I actually don't have a great answer to that. Deb, do you?
I mean, I think we're talking about just getting a sense of what our students' experience is like as opposed to like pure empirical research. So I think that's sort of what we have to get at and maybe hear from, as you were recommending, some hearing from students and from staff.
Okay, John.
John Peterson, Six Jackson Drive. Well, apparently, I'm already in Adam's head, so I don't know why I'm back here, but maybe I want to support the little voice that's in Adam's head and reflect on the fact, you know, that this year, unlike last year, I don't think there's a lot of uncertainty on the revenue side. Last year, there were a lot of questions about what was going to happen with federal funds, and that isn't on the horizon. So I think that Dave, by reviewing the reserve position earlier, you know, addressed one element of revenues that, you know, will be part of the budget discussion. And the only other part is the taxes. And since Acton is at the levy limit, I think on the revenue side, you are in a somewhat good position in that you can start off with a very clear idea of what the revenues are. And then, obviously, you know, the administration still has a ton of work to do to figure out, you know, how best to match the expense budget to the available revenues. But I don't think it's the case where there are unexpected revenues that are going to show up that are going to make a difference. So I think Adam's correct that we can start with, you know, a very strong, you know, revenue assumption and then work through the budget process to the final presentation to town meeting. Thank you.
Through the chair to Mr. Peterson. I want to say I concur with you. That's scary. Thank you.
David?
Hi, David Martin, I live on High Street in Acton. So I just wanted to say as kind of institutional memory, two of my kids went through the junior high at peak, and at that time, there were four and a half teams. I'm sure someone like Deborah Marie and remembers how that was done. I don't remember exactly how that was done, but it could be, there can be half teams.
All right, thank you, Peter. So a revision to our elementary class size guidelines policy, IIBA, will be brought to the school committee probably in the next month for consideration?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Jenny. Okay, items on, okay, so now, ongoing business. Oh, thank you for letting me take you out of order. Clearly, I wasn't following my agenda. Sorry, Kira. Okay, so item, so it's time for our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda do not usually require discussion and are approved with one vote unless any member would like to hold an item for discussion and a separate vote. I will read each item's name, and if any member would like it held, please say "hold." Members do not have to have attended a meeting to vote on the minutes. So first thing, approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of 10-6. Approval of pool renaming subcommittee minutes of 10-12. Approval of regional PTSO budget. Given that no items were held, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay. The motion was made and seconded, made by Tessa, seconded by Adam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, that passes unanimously. Subcommittee member reports, we already, yep?
I have a member report from the budget subcommittee.
I haven't finished what I have to say first.
I raised my hand just to get your attention.
I've got, listen, I've got things I have to say. So we already did the pool renaming, but anyone else have? Adam?
Budget Subcommittee met this Monday. We reviewed the FY22 budget memo that Dave presented to us this evening, and we began to have some conversations about, oh, we had some conversations around planning the budget calendar for FY24 as well as looking at budget guidelines for FY24. We developed a rough draft of the budget guidelines, and that's something that we'll be presenting at the joint Select Board FinCom meeting next Tuesday. And we'll be taking feedback from that from all the bodies and then going back to come to the full school committee with our recommendation for budget guidelines for this year.
Great, anyone else?
Amy? Just to confirm, there's another budget Subcommittee meeting this coming Monday, correct?
That's correct.
So do I have anyone willing to read the warrants? Adam?
Gladly. I move that the school committee vote to approve the below-listed warrants totaling AP vendor warrant as follows, 23-007A, dated 9/29/2022, in the amount of $1,785.25. 23-007, dated 9/29/2022, in the amount of $2,313,363.48. Payroll vendor warrant as follows, 23-007PR, dated 10/6/2022, in the amount of $576,308.54. And payroll warrant as follows, P2307, dated 10/6/2022, in the amount of $2,888,512.62.
I'd like to make a motion?
I made the motion.
All right, is there a second?
There is a second. I seconded.
Give me a break, it's been a while. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? No, okay. Peter, before we move into executive session, is there anything you would like to highlight?
The one thing I will highlight is if, in your packet, we actually included the enrollment reports, and just since we had the class size discussion, part of that enrollment report, you can actually see the class size of every elementary classroom in the district. And that's how it's broken out for you. So that may be worth taking a look at.
We have need to meet in executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Acton Boggsboro Education Association, the ABEA, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. So is there a motion? Tessa?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We are now in executive session.